We'll call the meeting order for September 8th, 2021. Start with the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, town administration.
The new cooling system is working.
It is.
Yes, it is.
All right, first item, we have an AA group that has reached out to me. We do have an Acton resident that heads it. This is a different group that's fairly new formed that is wondering if you would make them exempt if they use the hall one day a week for two hours there. They don't have the funds really to afford to pay the rental each time, but certainly for the cause that they're wondering if you would waive it. Thoughts?
I think it would be fine.
Okay, I think it would be fine with that.
You heard him.
Yep.
Transportation job is posted as we discussed. The Wilkins Road, Jim Farmer was in from Wilkins Road. He was the one that the road committee reviewed all the information and they thought he was missing some items, so he came in with additional information, emailed it to you, so if you can take a look at it, that would be helpful. And I also, speaking of road committee, I also sent you one from Tattle Street, new one that's come in.
That's what I couldn't open.
I can make a hard copy for you if you want.
Thank you.
Purchase and sales agreement was signed from the new owners of the Westshore Drive property, so we're going to be scheduling a closing next week. It looks like there'll be just the transfer form and the deed which will prepare for you to sign, or Lankowski will prepare them. You'll just sign them at your regular meeting, but the closing and everything will take place as early as next week. The, excuse me, lock that we put at the rec field just malfunctioned. It doesn't, it won't close. It's, I don't know what's wrong with it for the price of it, but we did get it returned. We got a new one. It's a...
Did they charge us for another one?
No, no, they gave us credit for the first one. They had one, remember, this one, the last one had a key and a combination, so we didn't have to make 100 keys. This one is just a word combination. It's kind of interesting. It's numbers and letters combined, so we're going to get that put out there and we can change the combination any time, so we'll just leave it for every so many sports. Just speak to the handyman today and asked him what the status of the cameras were. He picked those up, I feel like about two weeks ago. He said that he was planning on putting them up tomorrow. The signs are up, but not the cameras, so hopefully that will be done. Additionally, he'll change the sign out front. We're going to put the tax due date and the election, November election on the other side. We're going to be starting to issue absentee ballots here soon, so. One of the members of the rec committee notified me on August 17th that they have two baseball uniforms that they just can't collect. Their parents are just not replying, they're not getting back to them, so they turned it over to us. We've called and called, we've just sent certified letter. What do you want to do? The unfortunate part is that one of them has signed up for soccer, which is starting now. And the other one was a coach. But the rec wants to know that they're trying and they've got, you know, they're trying to get these uniforms back and be accountable for each one of them.
I mean, they're trying, so.
So I'd say the rec liaison, if I don't have any luck with my letter.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. Who's the other rec?
I think it's you.
It's you.
Oh, is it me?
I think it's actually me.
Oh.
I was going to say it's one of you two.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. Is it, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah. Perfect. So we'll give the letter about a week and then figure out what you want to do the next step.
Will the child be able to start? Wow, look, you can hear me tonight. Wow.
I asked, you know, I just said, you know, could you ask the parent, has anybody physically gone up and asked the parent? Because I'm guessing they hadn't seen him and at this point it's just been voicemails and stuff, so I've asked the chair, you know, if she's out of practice, could you just kindly, you know, quietly go up and nonchalantly see if they have it. It don't make a big deal out of that. I mean, I'd let the kid play and...
Do they have a price for the uniform?
I believe they're just the, actually, no, I don't know what the unit price is.
She'll probably make sure she has the amount for the uniform, so if she doesn't, so we don't know how much it's going to be if they don't return it.
Yeah, I figured, and I think that's the piece she wants to step out of. So if they won't, if they won't give it to her at the field or they don't have it at the field over the next practice or two, Ed will step in and deal with that piece of it. I don't think that, you know, you know, the rec is trying very hard and they're doing a great job. I think they're down to maybe three of them again. You know, at some point, we're going to have to think about this rec director or think about incorporating these duties into somebody that's getting some sort of stipend.
Yeah.
I mean, it's the hours, countless hours that they're spending.
It's an important, you know, program and we really need to, I think, put some time and effort into it, as far as like you were saying.
Could combine it with some other positions, so let me see what I can come up with.
Well, yeah, I mean, we obviously want to make sure the rec continues on.
Yeah, and like they're doing a great job, it's just, you know, she's going to come in, they're going to come in and get all the forms and they get a coach.
And I believe when we got rid of the rec director position in the first place, we did it kind of, well, let's see how it works.
How it goes, right? I just feel like...
People that were doing it were all gone home and we thought it was going to be good.
Right, and you know...
And I'm happy and so are we, so we may have to go back to the old way.
I think, you know, I think we should, you know, really look into it more too. I would like it to be a position. I mean, I'm not saying a full-time position, but this is a huge, this is something that our town needs, our kids need, and, you know, I just, we should back it more, is what I think.
Unfortunately, what's happening is because there's not a lot of participation.
Right.
And that, you know, and I think that one of the things too, when you took it out originally, I mean, there was also a seven or eight member rec committee.
Yeah.
You know, as people are just busy, they don't have time to volunteer, they've got a lot going on, but, I mean, you've got two or three members that are trying to maintain, you know, five or six different soccer teams, you know, uniforms and emergency forums and incident...
It's hard enough trying to get people to come and help coach and those kind of things. I just...
And now the insurance is requiring, you know, background checks for all of them, volunteer forms, so, I mean, there's a lot of paperwork tied into, you know, and we're giving as much support as we can. It's a lot. Next one I wanted to share with you was the notable events from the sheriff's department. I apologize, I didn't, I thought I printed it, but I'm just going to pull it up on my phone. There's only three for the last month of August, so that's good. The first one was the reports of a large amounts of people hanging out at Horn Pond Boat Launch. They went down and determined there was no criminal activity being observed. The next one, on August 13th, one of the deputies pulled over a 17-year-old that was doing 72 and a 35. So that was handled as criminal speeding. August 27th, they stopped an individual, a 19-year-old from Sanford for possession of liquor by a minor. And then August 30th, there's a protection order, domestic violence incident going on in town currently with a husband and wife, and they dealt with that situation, so. So they had for that. DEP erosion training is going on here tomorrow, in case you see a lot of cars parking lot, nine to four, or nine to two, I think, or, no, nine to four, yeah. Our CEO is attending. The gentleman came today and got a key, and I think that both of the road commissioners are attending as well, so. And last, to always end on a positive note, we have lots and lots of beans. We have beans out there, out there. We have a new variety of beans, so it's not just the green beans and the garbanzo chickpeas.
You've got garbanzo beans, you've got chickpeas.
I just know what I have.
You've got some navy beans, you've got some pea beans.
Now, we have black beans out here, so please don't leave without...
Taking some beans.
Taking beans. Kayla has done a great job today convincing probably more than half of the residents that it's a requirement to take a bag of beans when they leave, so. All is well, that's all I have.
Okay, lots of bills?
All signed.
All set.
Okay, approve all the agenda?
Make a motion that we approve the agenda.
Seconded.
Hold on, favor? Minutes of the last meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the last selectmen's meeting, which was September 1st, 2021.
Seconded. Hold on, favor?
The other set of minutes, just take a minute to give kudos where they are due. They're not ready yet because I haven't had a chance to read them, but the October 19th minutes from the executive session that was held in public, Ms. Cheryl has finally wrapped up, and I don't mean finally on her part, I mean finally because it was a long meeting, 29 pages.
What was the date on that?
That was August 19th.
You said October.
Oh, I'm sorry, August. So she did a great job with those, I just need to proof them and we'll have those for you for next week. They're basically verbatim, so.
Department head committee chair updates. See any old business, Eastshore Drive.
Adam, come on up and join us. Oh, I know. We're going to tell the short version of this. The board knows the majority of it, we just want to make sure that we're all caught up and on the same page. So we know that, we know that in the middle of August, we had a couple of trees cut from our hired company that the town brought out there, and we know that a property owner has indicated that some trim boards were ripped from her house during the removal of the trees. We know that there are two different videos that have surfaced that we've seen. One of them shows the trees actually being cut. It's the opposite end, so you can't see the house, you see the lines wiggle, but I think that probably happens in any case. We see another video where the tree working employee is actually talking to the property owner. He does, he does say that the logging company did it when they took the logs out, because it sounds like the tree company outsources the pickup of those logs to someone else. Okay, so we do hear the employee say that to the property owner. We also hear the property owner reference up there as we'll say that, you know, that could have happened, we'll fix that, we're not going to fix all of something, but we probably will fix that. So he references that. Now, the tree company has seen it, everybody's seen the videos, but nobody, you don't see the damage happen, so could it have been there? When did it happen? Who did it? We've been going back and forth with the tree company, trying to resolve this. We've showed them the videos, we've told them about all the conversations that everybody's had. We've been having conversations about getting quotes, because, I mean, the property owner wants to get it fixed. The property owner has gotten two quotes. One is right around $800, the one, the other one's a little over $1,000. The conversation that I've had with the tree company has been quite detailed. I mean, it's going on almost 30 days since this happened. You know, they've talked to their insurance company about what their deductible is, they've talked about maybe sending their own contractor out there, which the property owner has the right to pick the contractor. What I continue to tell them is that either you take responsibility for it or you don't, do you know what I mean? When you get in a car accident, you don't get to pick. If you hit somebody, you don't get to pick who's going to fix that person's car. I mean, either you didn't do it and you're not taking responsibility and it's up to the property owner to take it up with your insurance company, or we're going through all these conversations over and over and it sounds like you're going to take responsibility, but then, at the end of the day, they've just decided after two quotes and after all the conversations that they want to turn it over to the insurance company, that they're not ready to take responsibility, that they think that CMP, I think, was the last thing, one of the last messages she left, that they may have something to do with responsibility. We got to get this resolved. You guys have all seen the video.
CMP is all...
I mean, they weren't there doing any work, so that...
I'm just telling you, I'm just the middle man.
No, they came and fixed the wire, fixed it for free.
Oh, okay, good.
So the million dollar question is where does the town stand in this? So the town, and I spoke to our attorney, we do have responsibility in this because we hired the tree company to go out there. We are listed on their insurance, you know, as a, to be free of responsibility, but because we hired them, it's been the attorney's recommendation that we help mediate this and move this along, because, I mean, that happened somehow that day. We need to figure out what we're going to do. I mean, we can call the property owner tomorrow and say after 30 days, you know, they just, nobody will take responsibility, the videos don't prove anything, here's the insurance information for the tree company, you're welcome to pursue it if you wish, that's an option.
Have they got a quote?
Yeah, we've gotten two. I have quotes from contractors. The lower one is 862, I think.
I didn't hear about the other one.
I just got the other one because I was asked to get a second quote from the... I can, I'll try to find it while you keep talking. Oops, that's...
I don't know why we couldn't...
Would our insurance company pay for it and then go after them?
We're going to have over $1,000 deductible, it's not going to be, you know what I mean, for us.
Yeah, no, yeah, it's just going to come out of our pocket, so we, I mean, I feel bad that the tree company doesn't take any responsibility in it because they...
Really bad business.
It is, they stand to lose a very good customer over this.
And I did one of the, in one of the emails, when I just did a quick search, that, you know, one of the emails I said to them, because, and I keep saying to her, what do you, what do you think about your employee being on tape saying the logging company did that? I mean, it's very clear that that's what he says. And in one of the emails, it says, I spoke to our insurance agent, we do have $1,000 deductible, I haven't reached out to the logging company yet, but we'll check in tomorrow.
It doesn't really... It's all irrelevant.
I know, but I'm just saying, they've been, I don't want to say she's dragging it out, but it's...
Yeah, that's so far too far.
Like, they were going to, you know...
It is being dragged though. I mean, the company went in and told them on camera that they would fix this and that, but not this and that. We saw the tree hit the line, whether or not that did the damage or not, then he turned around and admitted that it was probably the log truck that did it, that they hired, so they're responsible for it.
It's still, yeah, it's still their responsibility, but, I mean...
But they're refusing to pay their deductible and they're saying we can...
Well, they're saying, let the, they're saying let the insurance company determine responsibility. They're, you know, she hasn't come out in any, you know, saying that, she just keeps saying, we're not sure, we're not sure who did this, we're not sure. Let the insurance company handle it, maybe they'll find us at fault, maybe they won't...
Would our insurance company do that if we decided to use our insurance company to get this taken care of, but then will they go back on their insurance?
Because our deductible is more than what's...
Right, yeah, there wouldn't be no reason for us to do that.
Right, well, I just, I didn't, you know...
The real kicker about this whole thing is, is, you know, I know what they charge per day, I don't know how much they get.
Well, we paid them $5,000 for that, that job, that they took down how many trees?
Six, seven.
And we paid them out, that check, and we held it for a little while until we figured out, just so that they could at least contact them back, they did, so we released the check. And honestly, at the end of the day, a good businessman would say, after especially being on video saying they did it, would pay the bill, it's not fair to the homeowner, that's, you know, kind of getting a raw under the deal here. And, you know, honestly, myself, this is a small, this is small potatoes, really. If this was a big deal, this is not giving me a warm fuzzy feeling at all. Myself, I think we ought to, we ought to pay the bill and...
I wouldn't think we would do business with this company again if they're not...
Absolutely not.
I'm just because, I don't feel like they're honoring their...
Well, they're not. I mean, they said right on camera that they did it, they're doing, fixing it, now they turn around and say, no, we don't want to do it.
I mean, I don't know how you two feel about that, or I just, I don't feel we should be using them anymore.
It's bad business.
Do you have anything? I mean, do you, you use this company too.
Yeah, I thought this was all done, but, yeah.
Yeah.
If we go on this file, we're going to have to just find some of the others.
Okay, I just, yeah, didn't know how you felt.
Right, and even, and just in her defense, because I'm sure that, you know, they'll all watch this, but the, I mean, you know, she's saying that her and the owner and the owner's the company didn't tell the employee, you know, the employee might have made a bad... He said it on his own behalf, do you know what I mean? He, and I'm, you know, I'm just telling you...
He's representing the company, that's the whole thing.
I know, I know.
And there is a picture, though, that shows it ripping off. Yes, it shows it moving, but, I mean...
If I sent my son to a job site, and he said, yeah, we did it, I can't turn around, he's representing my company.
Yeah, exactly.
This is just a really bad situation. I feel bad for the people because honestly, you know, they didn't do anything, you know, it was our, you know, it was the tree guys that did it.
Or the logging company.
But they hired the logging company.
No, I know.
It's all part of the tree company, so, you know, it's seamless as far as we're concerned. Who picked the trees up?
So, and again, it doesn't, it's, you know, it's, for us to get the insurance company or lawyers or everybody involved, it's going to end up being less than your deductible because I, I can't, I don't know, I can't get my hands on it, but it's about $850, it's less than 900. You don't have to, you can make a motion to go to pay the lower bid. The only thing that we will recommend is that the, we have a standard form that the attorney gives us that the property owners will sign off, and it's going to be a release form essentially, saying that, you know, the town of Acton is paying us in an effort to resolve this, but we in no way take responsibility for the damage that was done, any future damage, and by signing off this claim, you know, kind of like, you have an act, you sign off once and for all.
You think the, you think the second quote was how much, was it like...
$1,046.
Okay.
The first one was, the first one is a reputable contractor, local contractor that will do a fine job.
I was going to say, we could take the, take the first one, take the second one and just go halfway in between.
Well, there's really no reason to pay them any more than what it's going to cost.
But at the same time, and you said it before, they have the choice to decide who's going to do it.
I was just going to say...
They're fine with the first one. They only went out and got a second one because they were told to.
They got the, they got the quote on the first one?
They did both of them themselves.
Okay.
They reached out to a contractor, they know and use somebody that sounds like...
With that, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we pay the claim based on the first quote, 850-plus dollars, whatever it was, to settle this for them.
With the, with the release form, with the condition that it's signed by the property owners.
Yeah, yeah. And then I'd say we get a hold of our attorney and possibly go after the tree company.
I would send them a bill for the...
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I was saying, I just, you know...
So, okay, well, let's, we got two different motions. We have a motion to pay it with the release.
I'll make a motion to pay with the release for the 850-plus dollars, whatever the first quote was.
All right, and I'll second that. So it's moved and seconded, all right.
And then, so, the tree company, you're, you're saying that the tree company will not be used, we won't use this service anymore, this company anymore?
I don't think so.
We'll reevaluate in the...
I wouldn't feel warm and fuzzy about doing it.
Going to make a motion to send a bill to them?
It would be all, it would be completely different if there wasn't a video.
Yeah, yeah.
If it was hearsay, two videos, but...
I mean, it's pretty obvious that it happened during the tree war, so...
I think we ought to send them a letter, a bill.
Yeah, I'd have our attorney draft a letter and...
So what is it, did you want the letter to say? I mean, are we telling them in there?
The tree company owes us the money that we paid.
Compensation for the repairs to that house due to the admission on video.
Well, we, I mean, we could just, you know, we could pay the, let me look into it before we make a motion on that, thinking that to save the attorney fees, we could see if municipal risk management will just take it on and try to get our reimbursement through their insurance company rather than...
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion for any of that, that's just...
But I'd like to try to save the lawyer fees and not make it any higher than it is.
Yeah.
We can send them a bill too.
Yeah, yeah.
And within that bill, will you be letting them know that they will not get any more work with the town of Acton?
I don't think, I don't think we need to put that in the bill.
They're definitely not going to pay you.
I think they should be able to figure it out, I guess, all right.
Yeah.
Don't think that we should share that with them?
No, I would, because the thing is this, you know, we might not be here for, we'll be here, these guys could change, and in five years, not real, but they could be hired, and we're coming to the same problem.
Yeah, so that's what I thought.
It probably, it won't be the letter, but I will call her tomorrow and just let her know that the board decided to pay it and they did feel like it was, you know, that your responsibility, and one of the decisions they'd made was to stop utilizing your company.
Yep.
Okay.
Is that going to affect you at all, though?
Any work lined up this year, any more?
No, I haven't, no, I was going to call you tomorrow and get some work, but I, you guys don't want us to use them anymore.
And we'll, I'm sorry, Adam had a, Adam mentioned when we had this conversation that he had a, you had met a new, another tree company, there's a few around, but there's a...
One that Wakefield uses, I think, I'm pretty sure they had said they had a main operist, so, Tom Wakefield uses them, and they're right in the area a lot of times, so.
Be a good idea anyways at this point.
Gets a few bullets out there at this point.
Urban Tree in Rochester, too.
Yep.
Another good one.
I feel like there's a few around.
You've got a fellow right town, Ballard, he lives right over there on Horn Road, so,
There's a few.
Well, that's it, we'll get some quotes and when we're ready, we'll be good to go.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Adam.
One, two, windows.
All right. So, there are 37 windows. According to our quotas, I haven't actually counted them, but I'm happy to see that the first three companies all came up with 37. We, when they came in, we walked them through each room, we asked them to give quotes per room, but essentially you can look, see Portland Glass, a total of 37 windows, they're at $31,615. A Best Windows is at $32,384. Main Windows and Doors, 37 windows are at $18,463. And then Port City Glass is at 4,700, because their proposal is to fix the majority of them, they're not replacing them, and even though I asked him to please give me a quote for replacing them, so I'd be having apples to apples, I can see he chose not to. Let's look at the main windows to see, because I just, I mean, that's half the price.
Which one are we looking at?
Well, Main Windows and Doors, I mean, that's...
Is this replacing them?
A Best and Portland Glass is right around the same price, but Main Windows is still almost 10 grand cheaper. Description, remove old windows and replace with diamond 4100 series DH white LEOE argon glass, half screen, six by six grid. The only thing that changes as I go down through his quotes are the size of the grid, which is that the panels, is that what that means?
The grid.
Yeah, inside.
So he's got some at 6'6", some at 8'8", some at 12'12", depending on which office you're in.
Two, three, four, so these will probably be a 12'12", the bigger windows.
All debris will be hauled away by Main Doors, 50% deposit, please sign to accept. I mean, it's... One of these companies, and I, maybe Cheryl remembers, one of these companies, I'm not sure if it's this one, made all the windows in Maine. Is it this one?
Is it the Maine?
Maine Windows and Doors, I mean, you know, the other thing is, is how far out they are, we haven't called, I mean, this is the, just a draft of the first, so I guess what kind of additional information do you want us to put together to bring back to you? And Portland Glass, which is the second, I just don't know enough about windows to replace.
I mean, there's a huge difference in price.
Yeah. I like to do references on...
They're both argon filled.
Main Window and Doors, find out about their company.
It's almost like Main Window and Doors quoting the windows, and the other companies are quoting the windows and installation, you know, it's...
Yeah, but it's right here, installed.
Yeah.
Does say installed.
Yeah.
Is this Main Windows and Doors, where are they out of? Is this Main Windows and Doors? Where are they out of?
Portland.
This one's with disposal.
This, um, I'm gonna speak to this one there. So this is Portland. I don't know if there's anything in that humble jumble that we'll add.
I don't know, you want me to, I'd be happy to meet with them and work with you more with it.
Okay, yeah.
So we can figure out. I mean, that's a huge difference. There's gotta be something wrong.
Yeah, there's gotta be.
Yeah, because these two are like.
Yeah.
These two are kinda close.
Usually you get two companies that are pretty close and then in a third one that's way off, there's something.
Obviously, Port City Glass is not even.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's up with, I mean.
Well, they, I mean, theirs is, theirs is repairs.
Okay, so that's repairs.
But we did say to him, you know, we're looking for. Um, so Ed, why don't I, I'll schedule something. Are you still, is your Friday schedule still?
Yeah, Fridays is still okay.
Okay. So why don't I schedule something? We'll pick a date, if that's okay with you guys, and we'll, um, I'll bring a representative in.
Can we, can you maybe get some references too?
Yep.
That'd be a good idea. I mean, they must have.
Yeah, we'll find out how long the company's been, yeah. Find out how long they've been in business and what their story is and everything, so.
They must have done some municipality work somewhere. We'll settle that.
Well, you're done, Ed. I'll take those back to the toll booth.
Okay, we're gonna do a new business. Goat Hill Agreement.
What is it?
Goat Hill.
All right, so, um, Carl Davis reached out to me a week or so ago, looking for the town to enter into a construction maintenance and use permit agreement. The purpose of this permit is so that they can apply for things on behalf of Goat Hill for, um, on behalf of Goat Hill instead of going through the town. There's a couple more grants that they, that we may qualify for. But they have to have an agreement with the town before it can be, um, through Three Rivers. As a land trust, they qualify for some things that we may not. So it's a very, I did email it to you, but just for the sake of the public, it's a very brief agreement. It's between the town, Three Rivers, and, um, essentially it is, it does go for a ten-year period. Uh, but one of the things our attorney added was that unless early, earlier terminated by landowner is set forth below, the following uses shall be allowed on the trail, hiking, walking, running, wheelchairs, use of, um, powered devices, other power-driven, anything somebody uses for a disability. The said trail shall be open to the general public without charge. The permitee or their authorized reps shall at all times have the right to enter said trail for any purpose necessary to carry out their duties. Permit is used for the land on the attached map for the purpose of construction, modification, and maintenance of the trail. Three Rivers and its authorized contractors and volunteers further permitted the access, they're, they're permitted to access the property with the vehicles and equipment necessary for the construction, modification, and maintenance. Landowner may terminate this agreement upon notification in writing thirty days prior. And then the one that, um, town's attorney added, it is understood that the landowner assumes no liability for injuries and damages that may be suffered on the trail in accordance with Title fourteen, one fifty-nine A, and the Main Torque Claims Act. Permit E shall ensure that any contractor performing work on the premises shall carry the minimum liability, no less than four hundred thousand or higher as set forth by the Main Torque Claims. Permit E shall, um, hold the landowner harmless for any claims arising from said work. Permit E and its contractor shall obey all town policies with respect to the property. So if they do anything major, you know, they're still gonna have to go out to bid, it's still all gonna go through the, the town.
Sounds good to me.
So it's a contract for maintenance and use.
Yep. If we sign the contract for maintenance and use with Three Rivers Land Trust, we go hill trails.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay.
Mr. Chair, before we go into the executive session, um, I'm just looking for permission to work with the road commissioners and recreate last year's stand bid and just get it out. There won't be any real changes for the board that needs to review. I can take last year's and, um, pretty it up and make sure the gentlemen review it. We'll have it out and advertise it. Is that okay with you? So we'll work on that in the next couple of days.
We want to do public comment before we do?
Let's see, so. Public comment. Uh, we're gonna skip down to public comment, we're gonna end the session. Any public comment? See any, go ahead, motion?
I'll make a motion. We're gonna, executive session four oh five six A dash one at six thirty-five P M.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Okay, we will be back. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion. We come out of executive session at seven oh six.
I'll second that.
Let's go down to announcements here. Number thirteen, Conservation Committee, seven P M. Fourteenth, Mary Grant, six thirty. Fifteenth, Board of Selectmen, six P M. Sixteenth, Planning Board Meeting, six P M. The twentieth, Rec Committee, five thirty, P M. Twenty-second, Board of Selectmen, six P M. The twenty-third, Road Committee, six P M. The twenty-seventh, Warrant Finance, six P M. Uh, the twenty-ninth, Capital Improvement Committee, four thirty P M. The twenty-ninth, Board of Selectmen, six P M.
I have nothing.
That's it?
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.